Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November tenth meeting of the Fayetteville Planning Commission. If you would, take this opportunity to silence your phones. And Mr. Garner, would you please call a row?
Honcho?
Here.
Cook?
Present.
Winston?
Here.
Bunch?
Here.
Noble?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Autry?
Hoskins?
Here.
Chesser?
Here.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the consent. And there's three items on the consent agenda. The approval of the meetings from the October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen meeting. Administrative item fourteen dash forty-eight seventy-eight submitted by Craft and Toll Associates for property located at East Huntsville Road. The property is zone RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre, and contains approximately thirty-five point nine acres. The request is to amend the approved preliminary plat for Corey Tracey Subdivision to include a phasing line. And item number three, administrative item fourteen dash forty-eight eighty submitted by Sidney Simons for property located at six seventeen North College. The property is zone C two thoroughfare commercial and contains approximately point two one acres. The request is for a mobile vendor annual permit. Any motions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cook?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cook and a segment by Commissioner Bunch. Mr. Garner.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First item of old business is variance fourteen dash forty-eight seventy-seven submitted by Bowman and Crosno Construction for property located at lot twenty-five in the Crescent Lake Subdivision. The property is zone RSF four residential, single-family, four units per acre and contains approximately point four acres. The request is for a variance of the streamside protection zone. Mr. Pugh?
Thank you. At the request of the city attorney and this body at a previous meeting, we did table this item and it gave us an opportunity to speak with the applicant and look at the site a little bit closer to determine what may be best in this particular situation. When we looked at the existing buffer or streamside area that is there, it did include several invasive species. It wasn't very wide. The lot itself is fairly manicured down near the water's edge, so we did take that into consideration in the revised recommendations that you see before you. Rather than try to pursue maintaining a buffer that may not be desirable, we spoke with the applicant about enhancing the buffer. So they have agreed to item number one in the recommendations, which is applicants shall enhance the waterside zone by providing a repairing buffer seven feet in width, which includes no fewer than two trees as well as various shrubs and grasses. The shrubs and grasses should be a substantial component but are not required for the entire width of the rear lot. That would allow some access from the homeowner down to the water's edge in certain areas as defined in the building permit application. So item number two on the recommendations, a permanent tree and protection easement, again, seven feet in width, and that will be directly adjacent to the recreational easement that you see on your handout. That recreational easement, for your reference, if you remember, is basically the water's edge. So seven feet from the water's edge is what's being requested and agreed to by the applicant. Again, on item number three, we have the requirement of disclosure to any potential buyer that that is an easement zone back there, and as such is required for compliance with this variance. Item number four, the developer shall propose and use best management practices to limit sediment runoff during construction of the home. Then item number five, the developer may elect to enhance the repairing buffer by utilizing low-impact development measures. However, at a minimum, one rain barrel, no smaller than fifty-five gallons in size, and located in the southeast corner of the home shall be utilized. Those are the revised recommendations that you see before us tonight that staff would be recommending for this particular variance.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Is the applicant present, please?
Yes.
If you don't mind, step up and give us your name, and also if there's anything you'd like to add.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Mike Baumann from Baumann and Crosno Construction. And I just wanted to thank the good counselor, Mr. Pugh, for working us through this and helping us out to reach a situation and an agreement that is in, I think, our best interest, our end client and the end buyer's best interest in the cities. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
So we can assume that you're in agreement with all five conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Does any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we're going to bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I had a question about number one. It says no fewer than two trees, but it doesn't say what type of tree or native tree or anything like that.
We've talked with the applicant and recommended species that would be identified in our streamside BNP manual. They've agreed to look at those and make sure that one of those would fit in their particular instances.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, we got it.
I'd just like to thank our engineer, Alan Pugh, as well as the applicant for meeting and being able to work this out. This is not going to be exactly the same. There are other lots, as you can see, that are on that side of the little lake. This is not exactly the same resolution that might be for those, but I think it gives us an idea of what we can do to enhance that little lake, to try to prevent the runoff and still allow the home builders and home buyers to build a house and have some area around it. So this is kind of a template, although, as you know, with land, everything is going to be somewhat different depending on how much land they have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kit. Anybody else?
I'll just make a comment real quick. I just, while I don't necessarily like the agreement, I'm certainly going to support the agreement because this is one of those situations where, you know, things change a little bit since the passing of the ordinance and what's out there currently. So while it's not setting up precedence, but I think it's probably the right move in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I'll move to approve variance fourteen dash four-eight seven-seven with the five conditions of approval as stated in the stuff.
We have motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a segment by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item of old business is rezoning fourteen dash forty-eight fifty-nine submitted by Basin Associates for property located at three hundred and four hundred block of MLK Boulevard. The property is zone NC Neighborhood Conservation and contains approximately one point nine three acres. The request is to rezone the properties to DG Downtown General. Mr. Fulter, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was an item that the commission discussed two weeks ago as well. The applicant requested to be tabled to meet with staff, and we did meet with the applicant, or I met with the applicant shortly after that meeting, and discussed kind of their goals for the property a little bit, and some of the different zoning districts as recommended by the commission. In the end, the applicant felt that the Downtown General zoning district is simply the best option for what they envisioned for this property. And so we've continued on with the, pretty much, the original staff report, recommendations and requests by the applicant. We've added some additional materials in there that the applicant had presented from the PowerPoint presentation just to more justify their request, and that's been added into the staff report as well. I noticed on my staff report that it says no public comment has been received. That's true, but, you know, at the last meeting, there were some folks here for the rezoning and against rezoning as well, so I just wanted to remind the commission of those comments from the last meeting as well. In a nutshell, just to rehash kind of our recommendation why we're not recommending in support of the Downtown General zoning district, we feel that the zoning that's in place now is appropriate given the land uses on these properties, on the adjacent properties. There is Downtown General to the east and west of this property, and so the applicant does make a good argument for continuing that zoning. We just felt that zoning, as it was adopted with the Walker Park Master Plan, has appropriate boundaries. If they're looking for some additional housing types or non-residential uses, we feel that the conditional use process within the Neighborhood Conservation zoning district is a more appropriate option than rezoning the property of Downtown General. Downtown General allows really large buildings, much larger than what you would find under Neighborhood Conservation, both in scale, height, and bulk and mass, and so we'd have some concerns with what could be allowed under Downtown General as a use by right. So because of that, we're recommending denial of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I speak here?
Why don't you come up here and, or sit down or whatever? Give us your name first, whatever it takes to do that.
Thanks. Thank you for having me all again. Zara Niederman, Three Ball Housing.
Okay. Are you, you're going to be giving us a slide presentation again?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see if we can kind of move through it pretty quickly, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll do my best. All right. Thank you, Jesse, for bringing that up. So what I want to add is, back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we came up with the Walker Park Plan. The main goals were encourage the balance of uses in housing, improve connectivity and walkability, have key destinations, and...
Oops.
Just timed out.
Anyone? Jesse, you had to get this thing back. It looks like somehow it just shut down. It's going to take a while to start back up. Okay, well...
Give us the verbal version.
Okay. I mean, I think the pictures speak a lot, but let's get back to the Walker Park Plan. There's key linkages, walkability, mixture of uses of housing and other things. And so from that, the Walker Park Plan was created, and there was Downtown General throughout much of that area. There was one section where I'm requesting a rezone that went to Neighborhood Conservation, and then directly next to it was Downtown General. From, now, fast forward, fast forward four years to the two thousand eleven when the City Plan two thousand thirty was adopted, and you can take a look behind you, thankfully that's up there, but we will make appropriate infill and revitalization our highest priorities. We will discourage suburban sprawl. We will make traditional town form the standard, and we will grow livable transportation network. And that's four of the six. If you then follow the plan and look at what the recommendations are...
You got it.
If you look at what the recommendations are, there are two main recommendations, and one of those is to look for blighted property and vacant property or underutilized property and rezone it. And part of that is also speaking with homeowners and property owners to find a way to rezone property into more, to other uses. Now, another thing that it said was, in order to reach the goal of livable transportation network, it requested having more dense housing and other opportunities that are close, within a quarter mile of transit stops. Now, if you look at the map which I have, you'll see that within less than a quarter mile, very close, there are two Ozark Regional Transit stops. And so my thought is that this development is both, it's close to downtown, it's close to... Okay, so here's the action steps that are on the City Plan two thousand thirty. There's support rezoning proposals that increase density around logical future transit stops. There's identify existing properties that are vacant or prime for redevelopment. Now, let's come back to the Walker Park Plan. If you look at the Neighborhood Park Plan, the Walker Park Neighborhood Plan, you'll see the Huntsville Road entry on the left, and you'll see the Jefferson Square right here. And this says up here, Neighborhood Commercial, so just take a look at that. Now, if we look at the, this is a Downtown General zoning, and this is what we see at the Huntsville location, Huntsville Commercial. And here, again, there's the Jefferson Square. So you can see where Jefferson Square is. Now, you can see where the Huntsville Road entrance is, and the property that we're talking about right now is right in between those. So if we think about making a Jefferson Square a vibrant place, I don't remember the specific language, but if we think about that being sort of a neighborhood core location, it seems logical to me, anyway, that that piece right there would logically follow in line with what else is going on there. It doesn't seem that just housing, single-family housing, is necessarily the right. It doesn't keep it continuous. Again, here is the map with the Ozark Regional Transit. You can see in the yellow, that's where the two bus stops are, and the rezone area is in red. Again, here is just the location. What you can see, University of Arkansas is one mile away, Fayetteville High School downtown is less than a half mile away. These are all large employment centers and also just places where people go to school, obviously. This is a walkable area. It's easily accessible by public transit and by bike. Again, this is a bike trail. It's just right next to it. And finally, with regard to the impacts that we might see with regard to the neighbors, I realize that, you know, more infill and denser use of space can be a concern to neighbors. Now, I don't want to diminish that at all because I fully understand that that is a concern, but, you know, thinking about our City Plan two thousand thirty goals and not just thinking about the specific residents, you know, we need to think about this, you know, from the city perspective. But even looking at, we see empty lot, those are very deep lots right there where the houses are on Huntsville Road, and then you see a large empty lot there. So I think, you know, the impact to the neighbors will be somewhat contained. And I guess I just wanted to come back to my major points of the Walker Park Plan, looking for walkability, key destinations, one of which is Jefferson Square. And then with the City Plan, you know, we will make appropriate infill and revitalization our highest priority. And finally, if you want to look up behind you on the City Fayetteville two thousand twenty guiding principles, number six is a revitalized South Fayetteville. So I believe that by rezoning to Downtown General, that that will help meet the vision and the goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Does any member of the public like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I have a question for the applicant. So you probably won't find a more strident supporter of urbanization on this board, I would guess, than me. But I come back to the question I asked you last time, which is, do you intend to build the stuff that you showed us in your presentation last time? Is that your intention?
Yeah. So what I envision is, yeah, is where it's street, stuff that's facing the street, walkable, and apartments above. I mean...
Sure. So the problem I have is, all that's buildable under a lower zoning classification, and I think the concern of staff is that Downtown General, which was considered for this specific property and rejected during the Walker Park Plan, allows a much higher scale of bulk and area in this spot. And I guess I feel like during the charrette process, they sort of went back and forth on this. And while I would support, first of all, Neighborhood Conservation is more dense than what's currently built there, so it's already densifiable. But secondly, I just think that there are a lot of other potential zonings that you could have chosen that would have let you build everything that you wanted, that I would have been very supportive of, but it's difficult for me to support Downtown General in this location, given people who are across the street, and given the charrette process. And also particularly given staff's recommendation, whom I trust quite a bit. So it's hard for me to support Downtown General in this zone, and those are my reasons, and that's pretty much all I have to say about that right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chesser. Anybody else? Seeing none, I've got a question for you along the lines of Commissioner Chesser's comments. Can you tell me, because I am having a difficult time understanding it, and that is, what is it exactly you feel like you can do in Downtown General that you can't do in community services? Give me the differences.
Okay. Well, let me then say, I think what probably you're thinking about is neighborhood services. Community services would be looked through, and community services actually is similar to Downtown General, but the neighborhood services, which I talked with Jesse about, was it limits, and I have up here what it limits the two.
Let me stop you just for saying. Am I thinking of the right one when I say community services?
Community services is similar to C one. It's the mirror of C one.
I guess neighborhood.
You're thinking of neighborhood services.
Okay.
It allows, it's a maximum of like three thousand square foot for retail services, office uses, but it also allows a number of residential uses as well.
Okay.
I think that's kind of a step up. That'd be a good middle ground between Neighborhood Conservation and Downtown General.
Okay. But in these three thousand square foot buildings, okay, as he has them illustrated, okay, is that, is that going to be three thousand square feet of commercial across this entire parcel that he's wanting, or is it three thousand square feet per building? And those buildings even could be connected.
It's, the maximum size of the building is three thousand square feet, and Andrew, I don't know if we've considered multiple buildings on one side, but I mean, it's intended to be three thousand per building.
Yeah, it's three thousand square feet per building. Once the buildings are connected, they're considered to be one building, so you couldn't have two three thousand square foot buildings connected.
So in other words, even if there's a property line that separates the property?
If you have a common wall, it's all considered one structure.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I might have just answered my own question there. Okay, go ahead.
Well, yeah, thank you. I hear your point, and when I looked at that, I looked at it with Jesse, and, you know, we have our, he has his thoughts on it, but from my perspective, what that allows you to do is do a three thousand foot building, that's one building. That means you have, for example, a coffee shop, one commercial space, and it means that you don't have the diversity of having housing connected with it, or you don't have multiple shops, basically one. And for me, looking at it, I think that's not a way that I would want to go if I were a Arcegas or something, and I was going to develop something for myself, or you name the company, and I was going to develop specifically for that, I would say, yeah, I'm going to do that, but I don't want to be in a position where I'm, have one...
Not enough commercial, in other words, right?
Well, a mix of commercial and housing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I guess where I'm at on this is, I actually support the Downtown General zoning because it's flanked by properties that are already zoned, or potentially zoned Downtown General. However, I do understand staff's concern about high-rise buildings that would come with that Downtown General zoning, so without some type of assurance that the heights would be limited on the buildings, I probably will not support it. If there was some kind of assurance, whatever, that we're not going to have model lists in front of people's houses, then I would probably support it. Okay? Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Sorry, I do have another question for staff then. Jesse or Andrew, whoever wants to answer this. So now I find myself in a bit of a strange spot. It was my impression the applicant could get what, let's just talk about Dixon Street for a minute. Traditional Dixon Street, and let's talk about a two-story with commercial on the bottom and residential above attached, zero lot line. Give me the zonings where that can be built. Downtown General only?
Downtown General, Main Street Center. I mean, as far as downtown zoning districts, you're sticking with that typology than Downtown General, Main Street Center. Main Street Center being more intense than Downtown General.
So even with, can you even do it, can you do a variance, or is there any other, that's it? Downtown General is the only way to get the aesthetic that he was going for?
Downtown General and Main Street Center are the two. Community Services, which is, again, it's a C one, it's more something you wouldn't use downtown, has a bit of a front setback, a little bit, and has a ten-foot front setback, so you couldn't even quite accomplish what you're talking about downtown.
Right. Okay. Well, I may have to stand corrected a little bit then, because I was under the impression that he could build that with a different zoning classification. Golly, I hate to say...
Don't say it.
Don't say those three letters?
Yeah.
All right. I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. My only real concern on Downtown General was the height restrictions going up to fifty-six feet. Those concerns are really allayed by, I think, the reality of the situation, which is, there's no way somebody's going to be able to build a building that big in this economy, in that place, at this time. You know, I just don't see somebody going above four stories in this location, in this economy, in this area right now. I don't see it happening. Also, the hillside goes uphill behind to the north of this property, so that helps with building height changes as far as, you know, getting sunlight back to those back lots. Also, the depth in that area, I think, really is a good point. And so I really don't have a problem with the fifty-six foot building height in this location. I don't think it's going to be a problem.
And in Downtown General, it is fifty-six feet?
I think so.
Good. I think it was eighty-four.
And then my, just one other comment was that this, I was walking around down there looking at it, this piece of property, to me, feels more like a gateway into the neighborhood than the piece of property to the west, or to the east, which is essentially, looks to me like it's much more about natural water management in the area than a place where you'd want to build a, I'm not saying you can't fill it in and culvert the whole thing and stuff like that, but this piece of property, to me, feels more appropriate as, you know, a gateway entrance to a neighborhood kind of thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Winston. Next, Commissioner Cook.
Chair. I guess my, I mean, I love Downtown General as a zoning district, but in my feeling, we have enough Downtown General in that area, and Neighborhood Conservation's there to protect the residential areas of that neighborhood, and I think that was part of the discussion in the whole master plan, that there were certain pockets where you wanted to protect the residential spaces. And, I mean, I'm looking at the overall map here, and there's quite a few pockets of Downtown General where we can provide those neighborhood-type services in that area. So for me, I'm more apt to maintain the Neighborhood Conservation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I think it's forward, right?
Yeah, forward.
Forward with a recommendation of approval. We'll put it that way.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Honcho?
I have a question after all, because I think tonight's going to be a big lesson in rezoning all the way around. The properties that you have illustrated, it's page seventeen in the packet, which properties have you rebuilt or refurbished? I don't, I drive down through there just about every morning, and I look, but I don't look. I know you have a couple, two or three houses down through there. I mean, your intention is not to go in there and raise all those houses and build some giant apartment complex right on the street, anything like that. I mean, I'm sure your intent is, is to infill with the beautiful building, I would assume. On the front end, I don't have a problem...
On the front end, I don't have a problem with Downtown General. You know, the building height was a, was a concern to me. I agree with Commissioner Winston. I don't think you're going to get too out of hand with it. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you say yes and you keep your fingers crossed and hope that the, the developer proceeds with, with what they said. And we've encountered times where that hasn't been the case, so I'm hesitantly going to say I would be supportive of this. I typically, that's, that's one of the, the biggest concerns for me, is watching out for the neighbors in the neighborhood, and with nobody here tonight, either nobody got the message, or there's really not too much concern with the neighbors. So with that being said, I will probably be in support of this, and I'd.
And a motion?
Uh, I guess if everybody else is done. Okay. Yeah, I'll make, let me get back to the first. I will make a motion. What are we doing here?
You would forward it to the city council?
Yeah, forward to city council, RZN 14-4859. Uh, finding in favor?
Oh, just recommending approval.
Okay, approval, okay. Approval of the zoning.
Second.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We have a motion to forward to the city council with a recommendation of approval by Commissioner Honchel and a second by Commissioner Winston. Mr. Garner.
Honchel?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chancellor?
No, but good luck.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next item, next item on the agenda is administrative item 14-4881, submitted by Kim Lee Horn and Associates for property located at 232 West Martin Luther King Boulevard. The property is Zoned C2 thoroughfare commercial and contains approximately 1.27 acres. The request is for an amendment to the conditional use permit 14-4705 for additional parking. Mr. Fulter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sure, the commissioners remember the Whataburger project that reviewed back in May, it didn't go that long ago, but I guess it was. That was the large scale development and the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit allowed two additional parking spaces above what is allowed by code. Since that time, we've been speaking with the applicant, and they've determined that a few more parking spaces would, would help them during peak hours for the business. And so they've submitted a proposal to potentially amend the conditional use for the additional parking to add six additional spaces. What they've shown, and we've illustrated on the site plan, is they had a detention pond, as they noted, on the east property line, the southeast property line. They're going to shrink that down and put some of that detention underground, and to offset that, they've proposed some pervious pavement over on the west side of the property. So they're kind of offsetting, they provided about 2,000 square feet of pervious pavement for about 2,000 square feet of additional parking, so that's kind of that water treatment feature required under that parking ordinance. Based on recommendations passed, they're offsetting this additional pavement area. We feel that this is an acceptable request, and are recommending approval of the administrative item to amend the conditional use, and simply two conditions of approval, all the original conditions are in place, of course, and that they would construct the pervious pavement as they've shown on the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present, please? If you will, sir, give us your name and anything you might want to add.
All right, my name is Zach Johnston, and I'm with Crapton Toll, representative from Kim Lee Horn, couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to step in, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
This is sort of a case of an ordinance working. I like it. And so I'll move to approve administrative item 14-4881 for Whataburger.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, if there's no other further comment. None? Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner.
Honchel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's easy. All right, next item on the agenda is rezoning 14-4864, submitted by Parker and Associates for property located at 232 West Van Ash. The property is Zoned RSF4 residential single-family, four units per acre, and contains approximately 0.26 acres. The request is to rezone the property to RMF24 residential multifamily, 24 units per acre. And it looks like the applicant has asked for this item to be tabled until the November 24th meeting.
That's correct.
Mr. Thompson. Oh, Mr. Thompson's not here. Who's, who's speaking, Mr. Thompson?
I wasn't going to give a staff report. The applicant requested it to be tabled until the next meeting. They just want to look at potentially how they could develop the property under the zoning they're, they're asking for.
Okay, all right. Is the applicant present? Okay. Sir, is there anything you'd like to add before we move forward?
No, we just wanted to, to table it till the next meeting and then present it, our case then.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item, even though we are going to be hearing the item again on November 24th, or most likely? If you will, ma'am, give us your name and any brief comments you might want to add.
Yeah, I'm Irene Pritchard, and my brother, well, Pritchard and myself are owners of 222 and 220 Ash. It's a duplex that's right next to this property, and we would be opposed to having it zoned to a higher density. It's, it's sort of the buffer between the woodland neighborhood, and we're just, we, we don't need that, that many more residences.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And is there any way that, if they're going to postpone it again or whatever, that it's notified? I, I just found out that they were asking for a continuance, or tabling of it, of it when we came here tonight.
And we'll find out for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Garner, can you address the, her question of notification, please?
The notification is not, they're not required to send out new letters if you, if the commission tables it date specific. If they did request it to be tabled again, the commissioners could add a condition of approval of that tabling, condition of the tabling, that they send letters out again to the neighbors.
Okay.
Ms. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I move that we table rezone 14-4864 until the November 24th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table by Commissioner Chesser to the November 24th Planning Commission meeting and a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner.
Honchel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is rezoning 14-4868, submitted by Michael Schultz for property located at 2030 South Morningside Drive. The property is Zoned I2 general industrial and contains approximately 9.22 acres. The request is to rezone the property to I1 heavy commercial slash light industrial. Mr. Fulter.
Mr. Chair. So this is at the northeast corner of Morningside Drive and Pump Station Road. Town Branch Creek is to the north of this property, on the adjacent property. A large portion of, of the north portion of this is in the flood plain. As you, most of you are sure familiar with this area, it's a wide range of land uses in this area. Pump Station Road leads you into what's historically known as the industrial park, now termed the Commerce Park, but it's all I2 in that area. It's pretty much heavy industrial uses, whether it be warehousing, manufacturing, construction services, those types of items. Along Morningside, the west side of this property, it's single-family, there's a guy with, I think, a car business up the road. It's rural, there's agricultural uses, it's a little bit of everything, but it's more towards the residential rural side on the west side of this property and heading south as well. Now, there's even auto salvage business on the east side of this property. Property's currently Zoned I2, that's consistent with really everything along Pump Station Road. The request to rezone this to I1, which is heavy commercial light industrial, so you don't get the heavy commercial or heavy manufacturing uses, you get an I2, and you start to add some more commercial-type uses in I1. Included both the I1 and I2 zoning pages from the zoning chapter, so you can see exactly what is allowed by right in these two zoning districts. Future land use map identifies this area as industrial, so it just kind of gives you a general description. So both the I2 and I1 designation are consistent with the future land use map. As far as rezoning to I1 from I2, the I2 zoning district is appropriate, you know, it's consistent with Commerce Park, consistent with the zoning district. I1's also a consistent zoning designation. A lot, a lot of the properties to the west are actually Zoned I1, even though they may be used for industrial uses, there's some I1 in the area. And actually, if you look on your zoning map on page 10 of 13 in your packet, you'll notice on the east side of Morningside Drive, as you go south, there's actually a strip of I1, it's almost an intentional transition, and that, I think, is what caught our eye staff, is this transition from the I2 properties all within Commerce Park and some of the areas around there. And as you move west towards City Lake Road or Morningside, depending on where you're at on that road, it actually goes to I1. And so there's a whole strip of I1 that actually creates kind of a, a transition to Morningside, because once you cross Morningside to the west, it actually is predominantly houses on that side. So it, that was an interesting thing for us to note on the existing zoning map, and so this would be actually very consistent with that kind of transition in intensity. So you've got heavy industrial uses to the east, you step to this property, you have an I1 designation potentially, and then you step across Morningside into the residential area. And so it actually creates a really good transition if this property were to be rezoned I1. Again, the current zoning isn't an inappropriate zoning district, nor is I1 designation, and so really looking at compatibility purposes, I think you could go either way. I think I1 that they've requested is completely appropriate. Again, I think looking at the buffer, the transition, Morningside is a pretty rural residential area, and I think leaning towards what's the most appropriate for the lower classified land uses versus trying to be more compatible with the intense land uses to the east, and so the I1 zoning district, to us, makes sense in this location. So we are recommending in favor of the rezoning and that it be recommended to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is applicant present, please? If you will, sir, give us your name and anything you may want to add.
Yes, my name's Michael Schultz. I was requested by Prism Education Center to file for this rezoning, and Misty Newcomb, who's the director of the school, is here also, so if you have questions, she can also step up and talk if that's permissible. She, she knows the school real well, but don't really have any comments. I think we really are looking at this as very congruent zoning with what's already down in that area, so we don't have much to add.
Okay.
If you've got questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll get back with you if we've got anything. Does there any member of the public like to speak to this item? If you will, step up and give us your name, and if you will, keep your comments as brief as possible.
My name is Elizabeth Chadbourne-McKee. I'm the groundskeeper for that beautiful property, and I think a school would be a rather nice use there. It is next to a salvage yard, you'll need a fence, I think, and the salvage yard is subject to some theft and difficulties there. I've been keeping horses on that land for about three decades, I guess, and there are a lot of people that ride there, so I just wanted to point out to you all that it is near Fayetteville's only equestrian trail, which was done when Marion Orton was mayor of the city, and so that might be something, you know, just for us to think about, but of course, because this is private land, I realize that it doesn't really affect that. I would like to point out that it's, it has very beautiful trees on it. They were heavily damaged in the ice storm. I actually personally cleaned it. I can run a chainsaw, I don't look like it, but I can run a chainsaw and a tractor, and I did clean it, so I hope that you all can think of that when you're doing your layout. It does have a creek that goes through it. Well, I can't really call it a creek anymore, because the way we've developed the land, it's changed the way the land lies and drains a lot, but it's probably something that needs to be thought about a lot in the placement, and it's quite a mosquito hatchery and a tick, tick hatchery as well. It was, it recently had a tree stolen, a very large and beautiful walnut tree, this big around, literally stolen off the land. So that was the best tree that was there. There are many others, and the, the front of it is the most beautiful part, so perhaps in the planning, that can be considered in making some green space.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I know every inch of the land, if you have any questions.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Hi, my name's Kristi Spielmaker, and just as a member of the public, I would like to say that I'm supportive of rezoning this land. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
My name is Chung Ten, I work for the Fayetteville Chamber. The Fayetteville Chamber is the economic developer for the city of Fayetteville. I have submitted a letter of concern to the Planning Commission for this rezoning request for a couple of reasons. If you look at the map, Morningside is a two-way road, Pump Station is also a two-way road. From 15, if you look at the, this is what we used to call the Fayetteville Industrial Park. It is a park zone especially for heavy industries, and that's why a lot of it is considered as I2. In this complex, all right, we have companies like American Air Filter, we have Superior Industries, we have Carter, we have Bright Technology, we have Hannah's Candles, we have Marshalltown Tools. So all together, we have about 4,000 employees, factory workers that go to work every day in this industrial park. A lot of the employers there are open 24/7, two to three shifts, and when they change shift, you're looking at hundreds of cars leaving, and usually the arterial road is Morningside, Pump Station, and Armstrong going to 15th Street. In addition to that, what is even more concerning is that, because again, this is an industrial park, we have a lot of heavy trucks, 18-wheelers, that are targeting this industrial park, because this is what it's meant to be. They deliver raw ingredients, they also ship out finished products. I did a survey on the employers in this park with this project, and asked what are their thoughts. Six out of eight of those that responded said that they would like a no for the rezoning request, simply because it is a school. It is a school for young children from kindergarten to eighth grade. They are going to start with 200 small children, and they're going to grow it to 500 eventually. We are all for education, we are all for schools, for children, but our concern is that, is this the right place for a school mixing with 18-wheelers? And the six of the eight employers that responded to me, all together, they reported about between 20 to 30 trucks a day, every day. And those truck drivers, they're usually from out of town, so they would use the GPS to kind of like key in the address, and more often than not, they are being told to turn at Morningside and then Pump Station and then join to Armstrong. So at a corner, during peak times when the parents drop off the children, and during peak times when they pick up the children, is also the peak times when the shift change. So all this added together, I would just like to voice my, our concern for the safety. It's a safety, usually I1 for us, it is a buffer, and usually what we are looking at is more for warehousing space, for storage space, but, but from what is the, you know, the extent, like I said, Superior Industries are about 1,000 employees. Carter has about 60, Marshalltown has about 125. So all together, like I said, every morning, 4,000 people go to work, every morning, afternoon, and at night, too. And also, if you can see the picture again, next door, there's the automotive, you know, junkyard. We have to be very careful, there is no traffic light at the junction to control traffic. So unless considerable improvements are made, like for example, widening the roads to four-way or put, or if you install a traffic light, that could kind of like remediate some of the, remediate some of the. the, remediate some of the problems. But our experience tells us that with Whole Foods, one traffic light costs $250,000 to put in. And usually with our cities, we try to cost share. And this is an additional burden to the school on top. So those are, I would like to be here to express that concern. For this particular location, is it the, is it a good place to put schools there, to put small children there, to mix around with the 18-wheelers?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Casey Shreve, and I'm a parent, a Prism parent. And I have children, they're back there with me. And I am for the rezoning, and I understand the concerns, but I also think it would be an excellent thing, the whole shift change time. I don't feel that it truly applies to our school. We do run by a different set of hours, so that is something to consider. And again, I'd like to go on the record as being for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you're part of the applicant, aren't you?
I am.
Okay.
She can still talk.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, well, any other public first, though. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
And I, I think I could even save us a little bit of time. Everyone on this side of the room has come in support of, of this. And so I don't know if it's beneficial to have them one by one come up or if we could do a blanket, these two rows. I don't know this gentleman on the floor.
How about a show of hands? A show of hands would work for us. Excellent. Great.
Okay. That, that might save us time. We appreciate the chamber's concerns. And I did just want to let you all know, we have three facilities in Fayetteville right now. One is on College Avenue. It's right by the historic, it is in the same parking lot as the historic Washington County Courthouse. One is on South Razorback Road, just nearby the interstate where the old children's house used to be. And one is in the Willow Heights City Housing Authority. And so we did traffic counts for, we pulled the data from the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department. And our current facility on College, there's a, the, the traffic count showed 23,000 cars versus the Morningside Drive showing 2,200 cars going by there every day. So we feel like it's, I'm, I'm not a statistician, but I would say 10 times safer to move the kids out to the Morningside Road in terms of traffic that's driving back and forth by it. The, the, I looked at Happy, at crossover where Happy Hollow is, was, the new Happy Hollow was just put in, and it has 18,000 cars going by it. Obviously, Happy Hollow's quite a ways off of the, the highway. We, we have good, good reputations with all the licensing agents and, and all the organizations that govern schools. We are always, we keep safety in mind for our kids, and we, we can assure you, we'll put proper safety precautions in place to make sure that children aren't running around near those streets. And I, I just wanted to address, address that. We feel like this is actually a much more appropriate facility for a school than any, than the two current facilities we have, both of which are right off of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else saying no? I'll bring you back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
First, a question for staff. Is anybody required to say why they want to rezone?
No, they're required to turn in a letter indicating their scope, nature, and intent of rezoning. Applicants do not have to divulge all the information about what they want to build. No, they do not.
Okay. Just a thought. I'm, here's how I think about this. If this was mostly school area and someone wanted to put an industrial zone in the midst of it, then I would have some concerns because I would wonder if an industrial use would be encroaching upon a lower zoning, a lower intensity use. In this case, the applicant is choosing this location. They know what's around them already. I'll trust that they can determine whether or not that they can keep their children safe. Looks like a large piece of property, I would believe that. And beyond that, we're really required to determine whether or not this rezone is appropriate on its own merits. The school might not get built, we don't know. Staff has indicated that I-1 is just as appropriate here as I-2. And I'm pretty inclined to say that this is, after that, if they want to build a school there, I feel like that's a perfect place for the market to decide whether or not people want their children to go to a school in this location. I have doubts, in a way, I feel like the chamber's argument that the traffic wouldn't work out is not a strong argument to me. I think if this was an industrial use and it was utilized at the same level that the other industrial uses are being utilized around it, that would be even more traffic. So I'm not sure how that's, I don't see how that's a valid argument. So in this case, I feel like if, if they want to try to do a school there, that's kind of up to them and the market to determine whether or not they're going to get traffic at that school. And I don't see how it harms the surrounding industrial uses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cook.
What he said, basically him, I don't have anything else to add. I mean...
I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, we're looking at this based on the zoning itself and not necessarily use. So I don't have any issue with the I-1 zoning in this location. And staff has already demonstrated that that's similar to what's around it, so I don't have any issue with the rezoning.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
This is a little bit peripheral, but we've had situations before where there was a tree removed from a piece of property that then was seen in Google Earth from years past and then counted against the number of trees in the property. So I would like to add somewhere in here that staff knows where this tree was removed from.
Pretty sure we'll handle that during the development stage, won't we, the large-scale development?
I'm not sure that somebody's gonna remember that somebody came here and mentioned that a tree was stolen.
In this town? You kidding me? That tree's got a name in this town, okay?
However, the property owner is not likely to be, have any sanctions because someone else came and stole a tree off their land.
Right, I know. But it can count against you if, if you look at Google Earth and it's, and there's a tree there and it's not there anymore.
You'll note that, won't you?
Noted.
Noted. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right, I got a few questions for the applicant, then. Got a moment, please? Either one, I don't care. Would you reiterate again what type of school this is and the children's age, please?
Boy.
See, you picked the wrong one, didn't you?
Yeah.
We currently have, we've run preschool all the way to ninth grade. We're in the process of expanding, and we'll be a pre-K through 12th school.
Pre-K through 12?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you will have student drivers?
We, we will, that's a, yes. We will have some.
Okay. All right. So the, and I'm kind of curious why you picked an I-1 zoning as opposed to a P-1 zoning for a school?
Am I allowed to defer to the staff? When we ask, when we talked with them, is, can I defer? I mean, we, we consulted with the staff and, and that was...
So the I-1 was recommendation by the staff, then?
It's a permitted use for a school.
Okay. All right. And the, what, what are you planning on as far as the size of the school, number of students?
500 would be the max. That's the max that we have plans for at this time.
Okay, so is this a charter or private school?
It's private.
Okay. All right. You said that you were on College and on 15th Street?
No, we're on College and on Razorback Road.
Okay.
Right near the university.
Okay, I thought you said something about Huntsville or 15th Street as well. Okay, I'm sorry. The, both of those trafficways are five lane, four and five lane, aren't they?
Four lane.
Okay. Or these are actually two lane?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I guess my opinion is a matter of compatibility. If we had a school sitting somewhere, would we allow industrial to be dropped in right next door to it? Probably not. And plus, I am also concerned about the, the roads out there and the traffic, and I do not think that this is compatible use. Even though they do not have to disclose that they're wanting to build a school there, the fact is, is for application, they have, basically have to disclose their intent. But even with that, the reason I would not support it is because, you know, we have very limited amounts of, of commercial property in this town. We have very limited amounts of industrial, I-2 industrial in this town. And I think that's something that we consider. I think it was considered earlier by Commissioner Cook when he made a comment about a previous rezoning we looked at. I think we, he said, we have plenty of downtown general. Well, we, I don't think we have plenty of I-2 for this city. And, and so anyway, I think that, you know, one of the things that we have to consider is, will it create a, potentially create a dangerous traffic condition or whatever? And I think that unless there are improvements to Pump Station Road, traffic light, widening of roads, et cetera, I think that, you know, trucks going back, back and forth past that school all day long, I think indeed will create, potentially create a, a dangerous situation. And so while I'm not opposed to the school at all, I will not support it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
I move the way forward, rezoned 14-4868 to the city council with a recommendation of approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I hop in here?
You betcha.
As, I just wanted to go on record, you know, I'm supportive of any, of any kind of education system center, anything like that. I work out there, and I know the trucks that drive that road. And pretty much, my first consideration on anything is safety. And the, the main concern that I have, I don't know if people are familiar with the ingots that these trucks haul, sheer tonnage of these trucks. And if there was a situation where somebody had to try to avoid an accident, try to slam on their brakes, hauling the, the amount of weight that they haul and careen into a school bus, somebody's car, you know, that's, this is one of those situations where if I don't go with what my conscience tells me safety-wise, if there's anything that ever happens to anybody that I could have prevented here tonight, that stays with me forever. And that's a, that's a big concern for me. You know, I, I think it's great that you guys want to bring a facility, you know, more, you know, a singular facility, I guess, for your kids, and I think that's great. But I do have real concerns with the safety out there. I mean, it's, it, that road is, is not a nice road. I mean, it's, I've driven that road 1,000 times. It's a very narrow and it's a very fast road. It's 45 miles an hour posted speed limit out there. And when you have trucks driving that fast, and especially right there where the creek crosses, it's got a good little hop to it. And that's, that's what I mean. It's a, the safety aspect is a, is a huge concern to me, and I, I won't be able to support it. So I appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just had one other comment. The safety part, yeah, I think that's an issue, and I think that's something that city council needs to look at. But for me, I think the bigger issue as far as land use is moving, developing a school that's this far from our core. And, and I, my preference is to see services closer in.
Anybody else? Commissioner Bunch looks like she's ready to say something.
Well, yes. I was just kind of in response to Commissioner Porter's comments. I guess what is close in depends on where you're driving from, where you live or, you know, I mean, so everything can't be necessarily in the middle of town. We can't, you know, we can't always do that. I'm kind of, kind of torn on this issue here, but I know several schools in our area that are on major highways such as Elkins School. I grew up in Elkins. I went to elementary school there. It's right on Highway 16. I'm assuming there's going to be some steps made to make this a school zone, not just a highway with a school by the side of it. So, you know, I'm, I'm probably going to be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to forward with a recommendation of approval from Commissioner Chester, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner.
Honchel.
Nope.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
No.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Hoskins.
No.
Chester.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our last item on the agenda is rezone, another rezoning, folks. All right. Let's, let's give it just a second just to clear out, just for a moment. Please excuse us while we pause for station identification. All right. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is rezoned 14-4867, submitted by Jorgen and Associates for property located at 2269 North Henvest Road. The property is ZONE CS Community Services, contains approximately 4.17 acres. The request is to rezone the property to C2 Thoroughfare Commercial. Mr. Garner.
Yeah, this, this property is ZONE CS Community Services. Have the property pulled up here in Google Earth. It's about four acres. It's bounded by Mount Comfort, Shiloh, and Henvest. Property is adjacent to the west of the Adventure Subaru dealership. It was built in 2012. That is ZONE C2. And the subject property was rezoned as requested by the applicant to CS Community Services in June of 2013. When the rezoning was presented at that time, the applicant indicated that this portion of the property was subject or was appropriate for neighborhood services and smaller commercial types of uses. That was our impression in talking to them at, at that time when the rezoning went through. As additional background, the planning commission has also approved for a portion of this property to be used for vehicle storage for the Adventure Subaru dealership. The applicant's requesting to rezone the property from CS Community Services to C2 Thoroughfare Commercial, and they've indicated they intend on expanding the Adventure Subaru Car Dealership on the property. And looking at a rezoning, the primary consideration, we've talked about in previous rezonings, is the compatibility factor. Would the rezoning be compatible with the surrounding area, surrounding neighborhood? So I'll talk for a minute just about this neighborhood, this Mount Comfort area. And this property is somewhat unique in that it's at an interchange. It's right on the highway on the east side, and then it quickly transitions into the neighborhood on Mount Comfort to the west. And so you can see some of the remnants of the neighborhood. Here, there's eight or nine single-family homes here on the south side, south and east of the subject property. They're built in 1950s, 1960s. They're still used as residences. I believe one of them is used as a salon slash real estate office, kind of here right near this interchange area. The property to the north, this is vacant land that's ZONE C2 and residential multifamily. And then to the west, across the street, is this pretty much a vacant field that's ZONE RA Residential Agricultural. There is some sort of storage yard types of activities going on here, but it's mainly undeveloped. And the corner right at Mount Comfort and Shiloh here is ZONE C1 Neighborhood Commercial. And that was rezoned in the last couple of years by city council. And then Come and Go Gas Station has gone through with a large-scale development, which has not been permitted even at this stage, but it's still ZONE C1. As you continue down the Mount Comfort area, you can see, just here to the west, is the Trailwood Mobile Home Park. There's approximately 72 residences on 23 acres. This neighborhood was, appears to be in existence in my research from the 1960s, early 1970s, so it's been there for quite a few decades. It is well-established, it has a community building in the middle of it for community events. It also has community gardens that are taken care of by the residents. As you continue down along Mount Comfort, you'll see a number of established single-family neighborhoods. On this northern side of the road, on the south side of Mount Comfort, there's several churches, smaller, I think it's a Baptist church on the south side, Mount Comfort Church of Christ, and then Pathway Baptist Church down the southern end, and additional churches as you continue out west, out the neighborhood. And then on the south side of the road here, you'll see the creek, and a lot of these homes are just large estate homes on the south side. As you, as you also continue north along the corridor, this is the Williams Tractor Supply. And this is, goes up into the Springwoods Commercial Plan Zoning District. And this, this red dirt area right here is where it's being built for Crane Automotive. This whole area is ZONE... This whole area, um, is Zoned comparably to a C-two zoning under the Springwoods PZD. In our opinion, um, introducing, expanding the C-two zoning back in, further into this area would not be compatible with this primarily residential, um, area along Mount Comfort at this interchange. It is close to the intersection, uh, along I-49, but in our opinion, uh, that doesn't mean it necessarily absolutely needs to be a C-two thoroughfare commercial zoning. Uh, the C-two zoning, uh, is really what you look for, it's our highest intensity zoning. It's for regional commercial, the types of commercial uses where the whole city, or the whole region would go into and shop, and you're, you're thinking C-two areas are, you know, College Avenue, Weddington, Martin Luther King, around the mall, and those are on, on state highways, principal arterial roadways where you have lots of cars traveling to the areas. And so this area, we feel like, um, is appropriate for smaller neighborhood scale, um, services and not the C-two zoning. Um, in addition, you know, the C-two zoning, if you're not familiar with the zoning designation, they allow uses such as liquor stores, um, strip clubs, adult live entertainment, things like that, that you would typically want in a highway commercial, not as you start to enter into a neighborhood. The future land use plan has, um, when we do these long-range plans, uh, we try to establish where we'd have really intense future development patterns, and so along I-49, we have done that with a City Plane twenty-thirty Future Land Use Plan map. You can see here on the exhibit, um, it's kind of hard to see from your seat probably, but kind of have these red circles drawn here along I-49. And you can see here, starting at the south along I-49, there's about five areas that we've identified as being the most intense areas that are specifically designated for the high-intensity regional, uh, commercial activity. And starting at the south, um, where the regional park is, uh, planned on being built, there's a, a regional note at this area. And then as you continue north along I-49, intersection of Martin Luther King Boulevard, and which is a state highway, and Weddington Drive as well. And then the, this intersection is not identified as, uh, an urban center area, it is identified as a city neighborhood area. And as you continue along here, going into the Fayetteville Auto Park and the Sam's Club, those are designated as regional areas, and again, in this whole area around Seaman Business Park and the Northwest Arkansas Mall are regional areas. And for these reasons, that compatibility issue, uh, primarily being the, the compatibility of extending C-two further back into that neighborhood, um, and kind of confirmed with the regional land use plan, we, we don't feel like this zoning is appropriate, and we're recommending that it be denied. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is applicant present? Is the applicant present? Is my microphone, like, not very good tonight?
I've never been called an applicant for a while, so I'm not.
Mister applicant.
Yeah, right, right. Well, you're the first person today that's called me mister, so I appreciate it very much. I think the illusion was that we had come to y'all and asked for zonings that didn't, weren't the same as we're asking for tonight, and that somehow makes this, uh, the wrong thing to do.
Mr. Nels, for the record, would you please state?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Don Nels.
Thank you.
And I'm the owner of the property and as well as the business concern.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I bought this property about twelve years ago, and we've been waiting to develop it. When we first started down this road, about five years ago, we thought that it would be unbelievable if we were able to sell six hundred new cars at this location. And we started in developing it, and we thought, as far as we could think out, it was about eight hundred plus used cars too. We're going to sell sixteen hundred new cars this year, and we're going to sell around s- eight hundred used cars. Our day's supply of cars is in the twenty-two range. So that means basically, in twenty-two days, every car is unloaded, cleaned up, detailed, sold to someone, and it's out the door. And the average in the industry is about sixty days. So the demand for our product is very, very high, it's expanding at a rate that we never imagined it to be. And did we make a mistake by agreeing to some of the type of zoning? And I think that the city had asked us to use that zoning. I would, I wish we had never agreed to it, but we're hat in hand today saying, "It was a mistake. It was a mistake," but I don't think it's a, an issue that anyone could have ever imagined. No, I've been a car dealer since nineteen seventy-one, and in that time, I have represented almost all of the franchises that we have in the United States, and I have never seen anything like this. Not only for the franchise itself, that has had five years right through the recession of contri- increasing, their strategy has been not to go to China, and it's really brought the forefront of Subaru business into the United States opposed to being distributed throughout the world. And I don't think any of us understood the concept of this. This year, we're going to sell about five hundred thousand new Subarus in America, and next year, we're going to sell about five hundred and fifty. And I say that because with twenty-two day supply, there's still a lot of pent-up demand for our cars. With that brings additional service, it brings additional parking for employees, and we simply cannot go, we do not have anywhere to go. It's my land, I bought it, it's there, and it makes good sense to use it for the purposes that we've got there. It will create less traffic at that intersection than any other use you could put there. Today, if you put some kind of store there, you're going to have to figure out how to get an ingress, an egress out of it, it'll be right in that intersection, it's going to be a big mess, but I'm telling you, that's not going to happen, it's my land, it's going to sit there until we can use it for the Subaru dealership. I'm just not going to put anything else there until we can figure this out. I also own property on seventy-one, the old Honda Subaru building that was there. It's vacant today primarily because we continue to have overflow in our inventories out there. And if we ever hit the national average of sixty-day supply of cars, and which someday we probably will, we got to have about a hundred and fifty parking places on seventy-one to do it. We can't park them in the field. Y'all all know we can't do that. So, we don't have anywhere else to go, and you talking about creating traffic. You put a hundred and fifty cars out there on seventy-one, and you drive those things back and forth two or three times a month, and it costs us about fifty dollars every time we put a car over there. Time we pay for people to drive them over there and drive them back, and the fuel and the time, takes two people to take it over, it takes two people to go get it. So it's, just makes imminent sense to put, to use this land for an automobile dealership. And I read some of the comments that staff made, and I, and I don't want to belittle what was said here, but one of the suggestions was to go out and buy some additional land on seventy-one, I mean, on the bypass, and put, put them down there. We need them together, we need this place to be together, it's safety, it's, it creates less traffic, and it's obviously the right thing to do. And I'd be happy to go through the history of the automobile business to try to show you that this was not something we anticipated, but it's happened, and I'm sorry that we didn't know it in advance, but it's just here.
Is that it, sir?
I think so.
All right. Thank you very much, we'll call you back up if we have any questions, sir.
You bet.
All right. Remember, the audience liked to comment to this. Seeing them, we'll bring it back to the Commissioner.
Chair.
Commissioner Honchel.
This is what I alluded to earlier, as far as the lesson in rezoning today, because it's, we, uh, we put a, uh, school out in the industrial park, and then we're telling a, uh, our dealership that you can't park your cars on your property, so they, here's the deal with me, is that when this came through, um, I don't know how many years you guys have been out there now, four or five years, I guess? Two, two years, okay. You know, we, we basically built an island out there, and then we're trying to protect the little island across the street. Um, I don't see any other use for this property other than what you're wanting to use it for. You know, the, the Nelms name, I think, is synonymous with Fayetteville and car dealerships. You know, as long as I've here, you've always built, had nice-looking lots, you've maintained your lots, uh, you've been a good neighbor, you've been a, a great asset to the city. Um, and, and sense of tax dollars, you know, these, these are not the things, I mean, when you guys built the lot, you very well could have gone anywhere you wanted to go with this project, and, uh, the fact that you decided to stay local here speaks a lot to me as far as, uh, you know, where your heart's at with your business. And I understand that. You know, and, and that's what I mean, is that, is it, looking at it, C-two, uh, you know, I, I don't think you guys are going to go in there and build anything outlandish or, you know, crazy. Uh, I think you're going to do exactly what you need to do as a business. Um, you're going to expand your business the way that you have in years past, um, and I don't see any sense in taking cars up to seventy-one because that is, that's just, you're just asking for a problem one of these days, you know, running back and forth, so, you know, uh, with that being said, I, I'd support the rezoning for C-two a hundred percent.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chester.
Sometimes on rezones, um, when staff makes a recommendation, um, it's sort of clear that staff is boxed into a corner, um, and they kind of want us to overturn them because, but they're following the letter of the law. In this case, staff is being very clear. They do not think this property should be Zoned C-two. I agree with staff in this case. I'm, I bought my, one of my cars at Nelms. Uh, if I buy a Subaru, that's where I would like to go, I think it's a great prop, uh, a great, uh, car. However, um, you know, the, the property was Zoned CS, and despite the applicant's statement that they own the property, they do live within a city, and a city has rules. I think that it's fantastic that they're doing as well in business that they're doing, I think it's great that they're in Fayetteville, but I don't think that means necessarily that the city has to rezone the property, um, to fix a problem that the, that the applicant has, because the property was Zoned that way when this rezoning came first, through in the first place. So unlike Commissioner Honchel, I cannot support, uh, rezone the C-two, um, and I agree with staff in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I'd make a motion unless there's more comments.
Uh, I've got some questions and whatever, you, you can make it, but it ain't going to go through yet.
You can go right ahead.
Okay.
If I change my mind because of what you said.
There you go, I'm hoping to change your mind, or I think I am, I'm not sure yet. I was surprised to find out when staff said of those nine houses out there, I was, single-family houses, I was surprised to find out that one is being used as a single-family house. Uh, I didn't think any of them were being used as single-family residents, and I go by there a hundred times a week. The Come and Go property was Zoned C-one after much, much, much debate, and I guess I'm kind of curious, um, of, and this is a question for staff, uh, what is it that the Nelms can do on CS and on C-two that they can't do on C-one?
The C-two zoning includes, uh, U-17 Transportation Trades. That's, that's for our dealership, and so that's what they need to, uh, to expand.
CS also includes that?
No, Community Services has, U-17 has a conditional use permit.
Okay.
So they could potentially, and we talked about, I, I talked to, not the, um, the elder Mr. Nelms, I talked to David Nelms about going through a conditional use process, and, um, we've really.
Mister him.
Apologize. Um, and, and my impression was, and I, I was telling, uh, Blake Jorgensen this today, I seen him out there, but, um, we looked at a, a general layout of what they wanted to do with the car dealer, um, the expansion, somebody had kind of drawn on a magic marker and kind of showed the concept, and it would not have met the Community Services zoning requirements. Under the Community Services zoning, it's a real urban zoning district, they'd have to put buildings at the street, you know, you can't have large parking lots in front, and so I just didn't see a feasible way that they could get what they wanted through a conditional use permit, I think it would just have gotten hung up. So I recommended them go through with the C-two zoning, um, you know, see, see how it happens.
Which got hung up as well, apparently.
Well, and, you know, and I, I was trying upfront with them, you know, unfortunately, we don't, we didn't agree with their request, but I think if it goes through, that would be what, that would be the zoning they need to do a, a big car dealership, you need C-two.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the appropriate zoning for them.
Let me kind of explain where I'm a little bit confused, because, um, the, now, the property that their current dealership is on is Zoned what?
C-two.
C-two, okay, good, all right. The, uh, I remember when this came through and we zoned it CS, and I think I even said at that time, "Boy, this is going to be trouble in the very near future." I guess, turns out I was right once. Then, uh, of course, the staff said something about the trailers, oh, there are seventy-two trailers, uh, I think, especially with the widening of Mount Comfort Road, I think we probably all know that that's not the highest and best use of the property, it's only a matter of time before it converts. As far as the adult live entertainment in the C-two zoning, from what I remember, doesn't that take a conditional use permit? It doesn't? It's used by right in C-two?
Correct.
Whoa, okay, silly me.
We'll be happy to consider that one.
A little bill of assurance or some kind of, then, uh, okay, and so, um, and then we had, somebody had mentioned that car dealerships are, maybe I misunderstood or what have you, that, uh, or this type of zoning is more appropriate along a major thoroughfare, and then I think it was said that North College and MLK would be two of those. I don't see much of, more of a major thoroughfare than I-49. And, and again, you know, the property we're talking about here is sandwiched between I-49 and C-one. I, frankly, I can't even come up with a reason why not to rezon this to C-two. And, uh, as far as the traffic goes, uh, Mr. Nelms made a comment that, uh, I believe, I agree with him on a hundred percent, and that is, you know, a car dealership, you would think would have a lot of cars going in and out of it all the time, but it really doesn't. Um, and so, anything that would be in Community Services, uh, or what have you, or a, uh, yeah, in Community Services with the buildings pulled up lovely to the street and all that, uh, would likely create more traffic than what this car dealership will. And I know that after Come and Go came through here, they've been working through the large-scale development process and the permitting process, and I think one of the things that's hanging up is because there are issues with Mount Comfort Road and how it was built, whatever, and, and geometry of lanes and all that, that, that they've been asked to take another look at. Is that fairly accurate statement? Well, you're not engineering, so never mind. And so, you're engineering, do you know something about that?
Well.
If you come up here, because I'm kind of curious about that.
Well, this is, uh, Blake Jorgensen, Jorgensen Associates. Part of the complication is with Community Services, you would, the whole road is easements right now, so we can't put the buildings up against these roads. Geometrically, the, the curvature of the road would also lend to a more awkward formation for the building. And the other thing to consider is that originally, is my understanding that Community Services had an amendment, it required a, an opaque facade between the right-of-way and any parking lot, if you're going to have a parking lot, so essentially a, a brick wall that you could see through. So there's, there's numerous factors that this development could not meet, that, and that's the name, namely reason for requesting a different zoning, is they can't do a development, they can't do an expansion under Community Services. They couldn't put their buildings up against, uh, e- any of the streets because of the easements. No development will be able to do that. You can't vacate them because there exist utilities. So, you have to get multiple variances, you have to get a conditional use, you have to get a variance for, um, the, the block wall, and I'm, I apologize if I don't know the exact language, uh, the planners may have to chime in on that, but there's just too many obstacles to overcome, and, um, you know, when they met with staff, even staff agreed that, yes, it's, under Community Services, you could not do a development of this type. And it's really, if you're just talking about a general, any type of development, you're going to have issues due to the nature of the way the road comes in, the way the existing easements are, so no matter what the zoning is, putting a building up against those streets is not going to be very feasible, so.
For anybody.
Yeah, and so they're just kind of, you know, and it's just one of the situations that does not fit a development pattern for. not fit a development pattern for not only their business, but hardly any business, it's just gonna be tough.
Thank you, sir.
So, thanks.
Finally, I'll close with this. You know, one of the things, I think I even mentioned the last time the Nelms came through, when they wanted the expansion to the grass parking lot behind the building, I think I asked David if, because I remember before that, there was a, it was submitted that the cars would be moved off of North College, and they needed the grass parking lot to move those cars off of North College. And then, and, and at that time, when he came through, I remembered that statement being made the previous time they came through, but the cars were still up there. So anyway, but the point was, is they finally got them moved off, off of North College, and I had just as soon see that building up on North College, that property rebirthed itself. As long as they need it for parking the cars, it's probably not gonna happen. And so, and then I think to ask them to buy other property further up the freeway or whatever to store their cars on or what have you, I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate approach at all. So I am definitely going to support this, and that's probably, as far as this crowd, that might not be good for you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Faltzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify on the easement, Blake is correct about the easements being restrictive in some portions of the property, but not the entire property. That was something we looked at originally, it was actually part of the conversation when they came through the conditional use for that grass or paved parking lot area. So it is challenging towards the intersection of Mount Comfort and Shiloh, but as you move north of the property, there are easements that would conflict with the building location.
What about along Mount Comfort Road?
Along Mount Comfort, a big problem, there's a large water line that runs north-south running along Shiloh, and so that's really where there's a conflict. In fact, you can look at page, there's a survey, there, I could... Yeah, thirteen of nineteen? So you can see, if you look right along Shiloh, there's a really big water line easement that we put there. But to, to the north, there's a smaller easement where you could actually place a building adjacent to the street, potentially also towards the south, and that was something we've kind of spoken with the applicant, and again, made mention of at the conditional use review several months ago.
Okay. Yeah, that looks to me like it could, it could cause some problems. Yes, City Attorney Kit?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I gotta say that I agree with the planners, Andrew, when he says that a, it just won't work with CS with conditional uses and stuff, that the only way that this can be developed as a, as a car lot, as to expand the car lot, would be in the C two zoning. And I, I have some concerns as the city attorney, if, if the city is going to try to tell a landowner who basically owns an entire block, on half of which, or more than half of which is already a car lot, that they cannot expand their business any way into the rest of the lot, even though they need to for valid business purposes, and even though, as you pointed out, across the street is other commercial land. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I have, I really have some legal concerns here if we were to deny them the use of their own property, which is basically the only way they can use it for their car lot when the, the need is there. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any more comments?
Mr. Chair.
Uh-oh, we got two of them now. Let's go with Mr. Cook first.
He's about to make a motion, let me go ahead and say a couple things. I mean, I hate C two zoning, I'm not a big fan of it either, but unfortunately, in this situation, I understand the Nelms' position, and...
But it's legal.
It's a kit made, I mean, the matter, fact of the matter is, he does own all this property, so we certainly can't force him, in my opinion, so as much as I hate to support C two zoning, I probably will in this case, just because he owns all the land, and, I mean, I think expanding a dealership is, I don't have a problem with him expanding a dealership there. I'm just concerned it's, you know, not, nothing bad against him, but down the future, let's say the dealership folds, what happens with that piece of property, I have a little more concern about down the road, but certainly not the current use of it, so...
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Winston, are you about to make a motion to forward with the recommendation of approval?
Might.
Okay.
Might do it backwards, just to mess with it.
Don't do that. Please don't do that. I already had a one...
So here we've got this piece of property that I don't think I've ever been more assured that it was actually gonna be used for the use that is, is being, that this rezoning's being requested for. It has two large radius borders, which are pretty well-established, can be there a long time. It's, as I've seen in the years I've been on planning commission, always a little tricky to make intersections on, on large radius borders, that's why we don't usually do them in the first place. And I also think that as a neighbor, a area used for parking cars is, is a good neighbor to a neighborhood. Height limits tend to be about the size of a forest or... Some streetlights and some, some good security cameras, probably. So I, I, I really think that the use is gonna be just fine, so I'm gonna move to forward to City Council with a recommendation for approval, rezon fourteen dash four eight six seven.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to forward with a recommendation of approval to the City Council by Commissioner Winston, and a second by Commissioner Bunch. Mr. Garner.
Honsel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chancellor?
No.
Odd man out.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. But you're still mister. Because you're, you're still mister, Mr. Nelms. Okay? All right, do we have a subdivision coming up, Mr. Garner?
We do, we have Team One, Bunch, Noble, and Honsel, nine o'clock this Thursday.
Okay, great, okay. Again, if anybody can't make it for any reason, please let us know ahead of time so that we can find a fill-in. And with that, we adjourn.